Welcome to Thursday, June 11th, meeting of the Capitola City Council. Roll call please.
Councilmember Harland.
Here.
Councilmember Bator.
Here.
Councilmember Vertrand.
Here.
Councilmember Termini.
Here.
Mayor Norton.
Here. Stand for Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sue, we have some additional materials received?
Yes, we did receive sixteen communications regarding item 10D, which is the adoption of the fiscal year 1516 city budget, and all those communications were related to the 1516 bicycle facilities projects.
Thank you. Jamie, is there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Staff will note one correction that was made to the initial agenda that was distributed. We had a change to the language for item 8G. In addition, this evening, we would recommend hearing items 9, B and C together as they both relate to the BIA's annual assessment.
Thank you. Now is the time for public comment. Oral communications allows for members of the public to address the city council on any item not on the agenda. Presentations will be limited to three minutes per speaker. Individuals may not speak more than once during oral communications. All speakers must address the entire council and not be permitted to engage in dialogue. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Helen Bryce, and I'm here tonight from Friends of Monterey Park. I'm the designated speaker for the evening. As you know, we represent families and individuals of all ages and interests. We see that the council has a busy, busy agenda tonight, and rather than take up a lot of your time, we just thought we'd make a brief appearance to say that we fully support the beautiful multi-use park at McGregor, including the skate park there. Thank you very much for that project, and we hope you'll agree with the position of many Capitola citizens that a 6,000-square-foot, multi-featured skate park at Monterey Park is an unnecessary and inappropriate use of that residential area, of that park in the residential area. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Helen.
Good evening. My name is Bonnie Johansson. I live here in Capitola at the Capitola Shore's condominiums, and I've come to talk about what happened last month with the smart meters where I live. One hundred of them exploded. Could have caused injury, fire, even death. I have a lot of concern about that. I know that you guys issued a moratorium on the smart meters, and then nothing ever happened with it, and now we're starting to have the problems that we had warned about way back then. We're really lucky that this time no one was injured and no one's house caught on fire, but these meters are a fire hazard as well as a health hazard. They've been recalled, thousands of them have been recalled in various cities around the country, and I'm hoping that we in Capitola would not wait until something worse happens, until someone dies, until someone's injured, until someone's house burns down, before something's done about it. A hundred of them exploded, not just one or two. One or two would be bad enough. One hundred exploded, glass all over the place. People's appliances died. So this is a serious issue. This isn't something to push under the carpet. I would like you guys to take some kind of action with this and enforce that moratorium that you wrote a few years ago. It's been done in other cities, so if they can do it elsewhere, you guys can also do it, or at least have an investigation into what happened. There's no protections in place to prevent this from happening again, none whatsoever. It was caused by a power surge. Power surges can happen anytime, so these smart meters are another explosion waiting to happen. We don't know when it's going to happen again, but it will happen again because power surges do happen. So I wanted to let you know that as a resident of the complex where this happened, I'm concerned, and it's scary. I don't want to have to worry about this happening again. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Has PG&E followed up with you and the other homeowner?
PG&E does what they always do. They say not to worry. They say everything's fine, but it's not. They don't offer any assurances. They don't say, "Well, this is what we're going to do to prevent it from happening again." And then, of course, they go into their spiel about, "Well, you can opt out," but you can't, you know, when you've got, there's five meters on each building where I live, so some people might opt out and others don't, but the ones who don't opt out are putting their neighbors at risk. So the only real protection is to get rid of them and put the old meters back because the people who do choose to have them are putting everybody at risk, which isn't fair. It'd be one thing if they were only putting themselves at risk, but that's not the case. They never were supposed to put that many per building in the first place. There was never supposed to be more than one per building. That was FCC regulations, but they violated that, and, you know, now there's bundles of them on these buildings. So if they all explode at once, boom, you know, that can be a fire. Plus, they're a health issue. Not everyone believes that, but they are.
Was it only smart meters that blew up?
It was only smart meters.
Only smart. The other ones did not?
Yeah, the old kind never blew up. I spoke with one of the residents who, it happened to his house, and he was there when the PG&E trucks came, and there was one worker who had worked for PG&E for over thirty years, and he even, point-blank, he said, "We never had this problem with old meters. We never had this problem until the smart meters came with them exploding like that."
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Jamie, can we ask that you follow up on this and have PG&E representative come to us and explain to us what this issue is?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn Garrett. As we came tonight and used the PayPal system in the parking lot, I was thinking how much simpler it was just to put the quarters in those meters and how long it took to figure out, et cetera. More complicated technology. Likewise, with the mechanical analog meters that measured the electrical use by PG&E, there weren't these problems with explosions. It was simple. They lasted maybe fifty years or more. These so-called smart meters are only supposed to last about five years. There are about 190,000 millisecond bursts of radiation a day from one meter, and in Sebastopol, they did a mathematical calculation when these were installed up there and calculated about there were about six million more frequencies of microwaves a day just from the meters on the houses, not counting the data-collecting units that are on the poles. These are surveillance meters as well, and the account that Bonnie Johansson told you is written up. Only view a copy in the June issue of the Connection Magazine. It's on page 32, about 100 of these meters exploding, and they did recall the meters in Saskatchewan, Portland, I think parts of Florida, and Pennsylvania due to fire hazard, and I think it is appropriate and necessary for the Capitola City Council members to contact those areas to see what they did to get these meters recalled. We do not want fires. We're always told to use fire prevention methods. A big fire prevention method here would to be replace these fire-prone meters with the mechanical analog meters that we used to have. One of the reasons I heard why these meters explode, and there are numerous problems, is they aren't compatible, the frequencies, with the 60-hertz frequencies in the home. Also, this type of radiation is labeled by the World Health Organization as a possible carcinogen. There are over 200 scientists who said it should be labeled as a carcinogen. So whether you have Wi-Fi, smart meters, iPhones, cell towers, microcells on utility poles, satellites, we are in a lot of trouble, and we look to you as representatives of the people to protect the public health and well-being. Please call for an independent investigation and replacement of these meters with a mechanical analog meter, and I will leave you these magazines. Thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn. Is there anyone else in the public who'd like to address the council? Being none, we bring oral communications to staff.
I did want to add that we've gone live with our new mobile app to pay for the parking, Park Mobile, so you can download it, and you can use that app both here and in Santa Cruz to pay for your parking spaces. So encourage everyone to do so, and let us know and give feedback about how it is to use.
Thank you. Council? Michael?
We had our first concert last night. Weather was fabulous. Everyone had a great time, and Shane Dwight will be performing this Wednesday. Come on down to the concert.
Thank you.
Car show was also a raging success.
It was.
And the chief, I think, has finally recovered. I think it's been a long time since traffic duty, hasn't it, Chief? Okay?
Yeah, I had a couple of friends tell me about the meters exploding, so I went to their house, houses, rather, and, you know, I did see some, I don't know if you call them burn marks, but definitely evidence of some sort of high-temperature effect on the paint, and it was already cleaned up by the time I got there, but I did talk to neighbors, and, you know, I was told stories of, you know, Big Bang or explosion or something like that that was quite dramatic, so I don't think I would have wanted it to happen in my neighborhood or next to me or even at my house. The other thing that has a lot of neighbors' concern right now is the sound of airplanes or jets overhead, and I was wondering if the city in the next bulletin could put out some information about what some of the citizens can do and talk about what the city has already done.
I will address that in a minute.
You'll address that? Okay, thanks. So those are my two comments.
Thank you. Stephanie?
There was a malfunction today at the SoCal pump station at Nob Hill, and the exhaust fan broke, and so there was terrible odor problem there this morning, but luckily, they were able to fix it today, so that's really good news. So if any of you, and in the whole rebuild that they're going to do of it, hopefully, it's going to take care of the terrible odor problems we've had there in the past, so that'll be taken care of. Next Wednesday, week, next Wednesday is our volunteer dinner night at 6 o'clock at Michael's on Main for all of our city volunteers. If you have an RSVP, I guess hurry up an RSVP for that. That's also the day of the torch run for the Special Olympics, and officers from various agencies will be running and carrying the Special Olympic torch and passing it on, and so they'll be passing it on to us, and they'll be coming, running down into Capitola Village for a little ceremony with the mayor about 11:30 or so. Everyone's welcome to come by.
Thanks, Stephanie. John?
Yeah, just want to thank everyone who came to the blood drive. I don't know that it was the best turnout, but a lot of people from Capitola did show up, and look forward to the next one. Thank you.
As a mayor, I sent a letter to the FFA regarding the new flight patterns that actually taken right over the middle of Capitola, and Sam Farr has been very active in this himself, as has John Leopold. Sam Farr actually has a website right now that you can actually voice your opinion through. This week, yesterday, we got an agreement from the FFA administration right here in this area that they will meet with us this next week, and we'll be discussing the possible solutions to this flight pattern and issues, and the public will be maintained, become informed both through the city's website but also through John Leopold's site, and Sam Farr has a communication system set up for members of the public that want to keep abreast of this, but we are taking action as a community on this, and it's affected many of us, and I'm feeling pretty positive that we at least got them coming to the table. That's a good start. Thank you.
We have an appointment for boards and commissioners, reappointment of the Capitola Historic Museum Board.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I'll give a short staff report. Currently, we have three vacant seats on the Historical Museum Board with terms expiring, they just expired today, and the city received a request from current board member Stephanie Kirby to serve an additional three-year term, and as far as the other two vacancies, the city has gone out for recruitment with extended until June 26th, so the board is recommending that board member Kirby be reappointed to the museum board. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm going to make a motion to that?
Move staff recommendation for Stephanie Kirby.
Second. Okay, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So approved. So we have two more positions open, and how do you apply for those, Sue?
You can, there's a link on the city's website with the application and more information, or they can call City Hall.
Okay. We move the consent agenda, consent agenda is approved in one motion by the city council, but the public may pull any item that is on the consent agenda at their will. Is there any person who would like to pull an item that is on our consent agenda for this evening? If so, please step forward. Okay, council, discussion.
I note the police chief is here. I was just wondering if you could explain item F.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Rudy Escalante, your chief police. We have handguns that are issued to the officers, equipment that obviously is safety equipment. Over time, there is a flashlight that we put on the rail, which is the bottom part of the barrel of the handgun. That light has caused some fraction on the spring inside the slide, and what we discovered through training was that the slide would actually lock back after the gun was fired one time, making it inoperable. We reached out to the vendor and to the manufacturer. They were aware of the problem, and what we've done is that we've exchanged our old firearms for new ones, and they've given us a credit for that, and so in order to purchase the new firearm, which is the same, virtually the same handgun, a different caliber, a smaller caliber, so that the new handgun will not be affected by the light on the slide or on the rail, excuse me. The old handguns have to go back to the vendor or to the manufacturer. They don't get sold out to the public, and so it's an exchange program that we work with the manufacturer.
You noticed this in training, so there's a training method or?
We train quite frequently in firearms, and it was discovered at that time, and so we had to immediately replace that. It wasn't something that we could bring in over time. It was something that we just, it was a safety issue that we needed to respond to as soon as possible.
Backguns for the training. Thanks.
Rudy, so you're saying that the old handguns can't possibly get back to the public? Is that what they do with them?
No, they go back to the manufacturer, but the manufacturer is Glock, so that's what they do, but it's, we have a vendor that we deal with that deals with the manufacturer. The vendor is over in San Jose. It's not something that they can sell back to the public. Those weapons need to go back to the manufacturer.
How much credit we get for the guns that we turn in? Do you have any idea?
I believe it was $5,400, approximately $5,400, half of the price to replace them.
Okay, thank you very much, Rudy.
You're welcome.
Okay, thanks.
Is there a motion to the consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
Got a motion to second? All's in favor?
Aye.
Moving quickly here. Jamie, moving. Okay, we're moving, we're onto public hearings and general government. We consider approving Monterey Bay Economic Partnership membership and approval of a budget adjustment. And I think we have Jennifer Dorset, if I pronounced correctly? Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, council members, I can introduce this briefly. A couple of months ago, Bud Colligan, who's the co-chair for the Monterey Bay Economic Partnership, reached out to the city to ask us about whether we'd be interested in joining. The Monterey Bay Economic Partnership is a group that was established relatively recently, and it came out of a real collaborative effort in Monterey County where the cities, public sector, private sector were trying to think sort of differently about economic development. And the group has gained a lot of momentum here recently. And Jennifer here, who's their president, is prepared to present to you what membership would mean in the organization. So with that, I'll turn it over.
Great, thank you, Jamie. Thank you for having me this evening. It's my pleasure to introduce to you the Monterey Bay Economic Partnership and our So we are a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization with a mission to create a thriving region with quality jobs, excellent education, and a high quality of life for all residents while preserving the natural beauty and healthy lifestyle we all share in the tri-county region, Monterey, Santa Cruz, and San Benito. We have a very active board of directors. Several of them are from Santa Cruz County. These are some of our members. They're both from the public and the private sector. We aim to create value for all of our members. Some of the activities that we engage in are, one, we advocate daily for job creation and expansion in the region, incorporating the needs of member cities like Capitola. We energize new initiatives that support jobs and economic vitality, such as Santa Cruz Works, Digital Nest, and Opportunity Fund. We also convene groups on zoning ordinance, business development issues to get to yes. We connect members to useful data sources and regional leaders who can help provide insight to challenges facing member organizations and businesses. We also incorporate member input into our regional work plans. This year, our board decided that we should focus on building tech ecosystems and workforce development. We are currently in the process of creating work plans with tangible results for these issues. Also, of course, you'll have our logo on our website, but the most important thing is that we will be able to collaborate on what is most important to Capitola. We also are really happy to bring people together in this region. We host two annual conferences. The first is a Regional Economic Summit. Our first one took place this previous January. And this fall, we will host the State of the Region Conference, where we will focus on community health indicators. With that, I do hope that you will consider joining our organization. It's the only way that we can really accomplish meaningful economic development in our region. I would love to take some questions that you have at this point.
Thank you, Jennifer. Anyone have questions, sir? Judge, please.
Hi, Jennifer. I did go to that conference in January. I'm very interested in the potential that this organization offers. My question to you is, how do you intend to engage Capitola, for instance, in furthering the aims of this organization?
Great question. Well, really, the first step is to have that conversation to figure out what is most important to you. I had the pleasure of reading the Santa Cruz County SEDS report, which included the city of Capitola, and there were three goals that Capitola has signed on to as part of that county plan that really align with our mission and vision. They were goal one, workforce development, which you saw is something we'll be focusing on this year. Goal number six was increasing the business environment, focusing on expansion and retention. And then goal seven was to build collaboration, including among education institutions. And as you saw on our board, we have several education institutions, including the chancellor of UC Santa Cruz on our board. So really, joining our organization allows us to have that conversation, figure out what's most important to you and what we can do in our work plans to make something happen.
Okay. Thank you, Jennifer. Is there any other members of the public who would like to address this issue? Please step forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, we bring it back to council for a decision to join the Monterey Bay Economic Partnership. Is there a motion?
I would like to so move that we join this partnership.
Second.
Got a motion to second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So be it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Move to 9B, which is consider the introduction of an ordinance in many chapters 5.10 of the municipal code pertaining to Capitola Village and Wharf Business Improvement Area. I think we were going to address this and C at the same time, Jamie, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And C is consider adoption of a resolution of intent to levy business improvement assessments for fiscal year 15 and 16, which receives the annual Capitola Village and Wharf Business Improvement Area annual report in the proposed fiscal year 2015 to 2016. And I think what we're doing with that is we're just setting that for hearing. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So how do we address them together? Is we going to address both of them at the hearing, or do we need to make a decision on?
Let's see if I can guide you through it here.
Okay.
So the mayor is absolutely correct. We have two items on the agenda here, and we're going to combine them into one hearing at this point. Number one is what we're talking about doing. The BIA has suggested potentially amending their ordinance, their enabling ordinance. And we thought that made a lot of sense to do at the same time. In addition, we also need to set the hearing for the annual intent to levy the BIA fee. Normally, that frankly would go on consent, but we thought just in terms of the sequencing, pulling them both together and doing them at one time on the agenda made the most sense. So a little bit of background about the ordinance itself. It was originally adopted in 2005, and this is the first cleanup. What we're proposing to do is remove some outdated information references to the original enabling resolution, which frankly isn't important, adding some new information about how the resolution of intent is actually adopted every year. In addition, the BIA has proposed a minor change to the BIA map to take out some of the kind of upper Capitola, right across the street here, Avenue, folks. And I'll show you a graphic of that. In addition, there's currently a list of all the addresses that pay into the BIA, which frankly I think is, and also the category that they happened to be in in 2005, which can change over time. It's probably not necessary for that seven-page list to sit in our code. So we're recommending taking that out and just having the map included. And lastly, we're also taking out, there's some specific categories that were identified in the ordinance. We're suggesting that we would just adopt those categories each year when we adopt the actual rates itself. This is the area that the BIA is proposing to remove from the assessment district. So by way of reference, this is where we're sitting right now. This is Capitola Avenue. The only property above Blue Gummer River View right here, I always get confused, above Blue Gummer River View would be the new restaurant that used to be the Taqueria. Most of these properties are residential, frankly. In addition, I think the BIA has historically had a real tough time collecting from a couple of these properties, and it's just been frankly a money loser all the way around. So they're recommending taking them out, and that's what this proposal ordinance would do. That zooms in on it a little bit closely. Again, the restaurant right here, Sullivan's House, and then everything.
Restaurant's in.
The restaurant's in. The restaurant remains in, and then everything above it is coming out, basically. And to go in a little bit more detail, currently, the ordinance has language in it that talks about the different assessment categories. And we're proposing to take that out because based on some of the direction the council's given, you've talked about potentially in the future considering maybe a new category for takeout restaurant, if we were going to assess a different fee to help on the enhanced sidewalk cleaning. And this would give us that flexibility within the resolution each year. So that's my presentation. Oh, so the recommendation this evening here is to introduce the ordinance for a first reading, and then in addition, this is the annual, receiving the annual report, and then setting the public hearing for two weeks to adopt the annual resolution of intent to levy the assessment. I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Questions of Jamie?
Yes, Jamie, would you go back to the map?
Yes.
The other properties there, am I to assume that those are, this is within the transient rental district? Or it is not?
Transient rental zone. I believe it doesn't, no, it doesn't come up this far.
Then we're saying, I'm just trying to figure out why in the world we would have things like 506, 507, and 502 in the BIA. What are they? Are those?
Those are single-family homes.
Single-family homes?
Yeah.
Well, unless they're in the transient rental zone, they don't qualify to be in the BIA.
Right. I think that that's why this is sort of a cleanup. It just didn't make much sense.
It has to be a transient rental, short-term rental, to be a vacation rental?
Oh, I don't think it's a vacation rental, because I knocked on those doors. Those people were living there.
Correct. And vacation rentals are the only things the BIA really assess, so they shouldn't even be there anyway.
Right.
Okay. I wanted to make sure my head was in the right place. Good, thank you.
Is there any member of the public who would like to address? Is there a representative from the BIA here, please?
Don't see one.
There's not anybody here?
The BIA indicated that Gary was out of town, Karen was going to be out of town. They're going to get somebody here for our next meeting. They've reviewed the ordinance, they've reviewed this, and we've gotten feedback from them, and they're on board.
Okay.
This will come back to us on the consent agenda?
So the ordinance will come back on consent for a second reading, and then the adoption of the resolution of the intent to levy will be on, as a hearing, has to be a hearing.
Okay, great.
Okay with that? No, we want to have discussion.
We want to have discussion, and since there's nobody here, we'll say that's, I would say if it was on the consent, we could pull it when it comes back, but we will have a general hearing on that.
I'm a little surprised that there's no member of the BIA is present with an issue like this. Okay. Back to council. What's our direction here?
Motion for staff recommendation. Second?
That sets both items to a public hearing in two weeks.
One item. No, they actually both would. It'd be the second reading of the ordinance as well as that. We probably, I'll probably bundle them both the same, just so that they're both in the same spot to talk about on the agenda.
Okay, thank you, Jamie. Okay, we move to item D, consider a resolution.
Want to vote?
Do you want to vote on?
We didn't vote?
No, we didn't vote. We just.
Oh, okay, excuse me. All those in favor?
Aye.
So be it. Thank you. Okay, item 9D, consider a resolution approving the proposed 2015-2016 fiscal year budget with city Capitola. And thank you to staff and city manager for guiding us through this in a very effective manner. Thank you.
Mayor, members of council, just a quick recap on how we got to today. On May 8, the proposed budget was distributed to all council members as well as the public on our website. We held a public hearing on May 20. And then also on June 3, we had the second hearing, following up on all the council requests from the first hearing, and also heard from the Finance Advisory Commission for their recommendations on how to use the general fund fund balance. And then we're here today for the final adoption. Some of the changes from the proposed budget, it's still balanced, so all the ongoing revenue equals the ongoing expenditures. We've added a police officer position. We've also eliminated a community service officer position in the police department. We've corrected the community grant entry area we had. We've reduced the IT transfer. And then on the consent agenda, you approved the alcohol beverage control grant, so we've also included that in the final budget adoption resolution. At the end of last year, the general fund had a fund balance of $934,500. The Finance Advisory Committee, as well as the city council, discussed this and came up with a recommendation, which is very closely aligned between the two. The recommendation was to use $300,000 to establish a purse contingency reserve to increase the capital project transfer by $300,000 for wristband, tennis court reconstruction, the village sidewalk replacement program, the bike facilities green painting project, the pump house area pathway design, the one side of the village drainage study, and the sanctuary trail markers. It also includes a $50,000 transfer to the facilities fund, $15,000 for a one-year enhanced village sidewalk cleaning program, as well as $3,500 for the plein air event from the Arts and Cultural Commission. The recommendation today is to adopt the resolution to approve the fiscal year 2015-16 budget and cancel all the remaining budget hearings. And with that, I'd welcome any questions.
Question tomorrow?
Have we reached out to the BIA and talked to them about the proposal to do the sidewalk Maybe that's not for you, Mark, but.
So the question is, have we reached out to the BIA and talked to them about the enhanced cleaning program? They're certainly aware of it. I think that the conversation with the council, I expect it to take place today during this previous item, and I presume it'll take place in two weeks. I think that's where this council's opportunity to explain this to them. I do know that the BIA is aware of the proposal and the plans.
Thank you. Is there any members of the public who would like to address this on the new budget for Capitola for 2015-2016? Is there any comments from our staff who have some say in this? Nothing, they're happy.
I think all I want to do is just thank our finance staff. I think they did a great job pulling this together. I know it was a bit of a seat-of-the-pants thing for Mark to come on board and tell him that he was publishing agenda the next day, but I think he's done a great job pulling it together and helping guide us through this process. And also, I think the council did a good job taking a lot of different input and trying to balance different interests and looking at a responsible way to allocate our fund balance in a way that helps further stabilize the city looking forward and develop some important projects. So kudos all the way around.
Thank you, thank you, Mark.
He's going to think it's easy from now on. Thank you, Mark.
We're going to expect that every year from now on, Mark. Thank you very much. Make sure there's always enough money.
Always a million bucks.
Josh?
I'd also like to thank the Finance Committee. We did have a report last time, and the public is very welcome to that committee. There was a lot of, as reported last time, there was a lot of good discussion, a lot of ideas went back and forth. Not all the ideas were accepted, but the ones that were accepted were welcomed and are part of the budget. Thank you.
Let's do a roll call vote on this, and what is the wishes of council?
Motion to adopt budget. Second?
Okay, Sue?
Councilmember Harland?
Aye.
Councilmember Botchard?
Aye.
Councilmember Bertrand?
Aye.
Councilmember Tierney?
Aye.
Mayor Norton?
Aye. We have a new budget. Thank you. I knew the bicycle committee would enjoy this.
Did you guys have a meeting recently?
How come so many letters?
Have everyone emailed? When was that meeting? It was like the night before we started getting emails? We feel the love, okay?
Okay, we move to item 9E, receipt report regarding Santa Cruz County Library Joint Powers Authority. Michael, are you going to give that?
Jamie and I are both going to give it.
Okay, all right.
I was going to try to bring everybody up to speed. There's been a lot of work that's been done on the regional JPAs here in the last several, unfortunately, it's been the last several years. Let's see if I can bring this up. There we go. So as a reminder for everybody, the city participates in a number of JPAs to provide library services. We do it regionally here in Santa Cruz County. The library system includes the cities of Santa Cruz, Capitola, Scotts Valley, as well as the county. Watsonville has their own independent library system. We basically have three different JPAs that deal with libraries. First, we have the Library Financing Authority, which basically sets kind of the contributions from the various parties and then distributes the money out to the two different library systems. There's the Joint Powers Authority, the Library Joint Powers Authority, which is really kind of the governing board that oversees the library operations. And it is actually set to expire in two years, in 2017, which, that was sort of the genesis of these conversations about the future of the library system. And then lastly, this is the newly established Library Facilities Financing Authority that is set up to potentially be the conduit to issue a special assessment to finance construction of new libraries. You recall that we adopted this and helped form this last year. At this point, that entity really doesn't have the power to do anything. It'll require a JPA amendment to actually specify the amount of debt that would be issued and how it would be distributed to the various parties. So those are the three different JPAs. The big topic has been, what are we going to do about the governance of the operations library in that JPA? Currently, the governing board's comprised of two members, the Board of Supervisors, two from the city of Santa Cruz, one from Scotts Valley and Capitola, and then three citizen members as well. The library director is a city of Santa Cruz employee, a department head at the city of Santa Cruz. She reports to the, it's actually, it's a vacant position. In the past, it's been a she. In the past, it's been a she, but he or she reports to the city manager at the city of Santa Cruz and also reports and works for the library board. All the rest of the library personnel are city of Santa Cruz employees, and then the city basically collects kind of a flat 5.5% of the total amount that comes to this library system to administer the entire program. So for a variety of reasons, the current structure was unacceptable to all the parties, and so we've gone through a long process of negotiating what a new service JPA for libraries could look like. And this is what has come out the other end. Basically, the suggestion is, the proposal right now is a four-member new board that would consist of the county administrative officers and the three city managers for the cities. It would be responsible for hiring and supervising, overseeing the budget, hiring supervising the library director, who would then oversee all the staff, overseeing the budget, and then adopting the service levels. In addition, there'd be a library commission, be a seven-member board comprised of registered voters with three from the county, two from Santa Cruz, and then one from Capitola and Scotts Valley each. And it would be intended to be the community voice and provide recommendations to the governing board and to the library director. There's a lot of discussion about future staff for the library. At this point, the plan is to keep them with the city of Santa Cruz. However, the JPA would have the authority to contract with any of the parties for specific services or, down the road, potentially hire its own staff as well. The service levels that are identified in the JPA identify the goal to maintain the 10 branch system and provide equitable service based upon agreed-upon metrics. That language took a while to come to. And then, basically, the JPA would get support services, not necessarily from the city of Santa Cruz, but that certainly could be an option, but rather than a 5%, 5.5% fixed rate, it would actually be a cost. The Library Financing Authority was also a little bit of a challenge, mostly because what's happened over time is that the city of Santa Cruz and the city of Watsonville have contributed a fixed amount into the financing authority, and the county library fund, of which the city of Capitola is a member, has contributed almost all of its property taxes straight into the Library Financing Authority. And so that amount, of course, grows over time as property taxes have increased. And so what's happened is, is basically, the numbers have gotten a little bit out of whack, and so there was a lot of discussion and a lot of negotiations about how those numbers should be tweaked on a go-forward basis so that the costs were fairly distributed to all the members. In addition, the Library Financing Authority also collects $9.3 million of sales tax. That's the permanent quarter cent add-on county-wide that goes to the LFA. And then, the Library Financing Authority, as I mentioned before, takes in all this money and then distributes it to the two different systems based on a per capita allocation. So the proposed changes to the financing authority basically put it on a five-year term and fix the county library fund contribution at $5 million, where it is today, for the next five years. So that number won't grow for the next five years. And then, the increase in that library fund will be allocated and available for library fund libraries, Capitola included. It'll be allocated at the discretion of the Board of Supervisors, and it'll be allocated in close consultation with the city of Capitola and Scotts Valley and the library director. That has been a source of some discussion, as you can imagine, but that's the language that we have at this point. The city of Santa Cruz is going to increase its contribution from about $1.4 million a year where it is now, where it's been for the last 15 years. It'll increase by about $70,000 a year, and then in addition, they've agreed to allocate an additional $30,000 a year that'll be available for their libraries to be used and allocated in consultation with the library director. And then, the contribution from Watsonville is going to be basically phased down so that we get to have the right number on a per capita basis for Watsonville over the next 15 years.
Twenty.
Twenty years. That's right, twenty years. Again, the library systems will continue to receive their per capita share of the sales tax, and there's language in the LFA, the proposed LFA amendment, that would include sort of a trigger, if you will, that in a declining tax environment where, you know, budget crisis was looming, that that would basically be a re-opener to negotiate the different contributions. So then, the facilities financing agreement, as I touched on at the beginning, there's no changes proposed to it at this time. We all need to really refocus on the potential bond, regional bond issue at this point, and if we're able to come to an agreement about the amount and the distribution, you would see a kind of follow-up facilities financing authority amendment to identify those things. So at this time, there's no proposed action. I just wanted to brief you on the draft language that has gone to the JPA board, the city of Santa Cruz, and the county at this point. There isn't a final MOU to consider, but obviously, I think you guys have enough experience with this. You know that by the time there is a draft final JPA agreement, it becomes very hard for the city of Capitola to change it when everybody's talking about adopting it. So I wanted to provide the update and get any feedback that the council has about this proposed, these proposed changes, and with that, I'm available for questions. Oh, and I guess also Mike may have some updates because he was at the meeting on Monday night where they received the presentation and gave the library board input into it.
I did chair that meeting. I was also on the subcommittee that helped form and draft the agreement. A couple of the things that you might question is, why change the JPA agreement? Why change the board? It's been going along for a long time. It's long been thought that the board was too political in nature. Frankly, there were just too many elected officials on the board. Everyone was very parochial. Everyone was very outspoken for their own little area. It was supposed to be particularly focused on providing services for the patrons countywide. We felt the best way to do this was to, not unlike 911, put the city managers in place along with the CAO to do the day-to-day budgeting and functioning of the library. Very straightforward, very effective. They are still at our beck and call, and we still, they answer to us. So really, the cities are being represented. There was also a concern that the library director never worked to the library board. The library director has always been an employee of the city of Santa Cruz. So the board couldn't even effectively really review the performance of the library director. They could suggest it to the city manager. Really, the city manager reviewed it, and the library director was another department head. We felt that needed to change, and that does change with this. The board was unanimous in its desire to keep all employees of SEIU working at the library whole with regard to their purse, their retirement, their working conditions, and their negotiating ability. So we did manage to do that. We couldn't do it forever, but we did, you know, pushed it as long as we could. The city of Capitola will have a seat on the citizens advisory board. There will remain a citizens advisory board. I believe it's two members from the county, two members in the city of Santa Cruz, one member from Scotts Valley, one member from Capitola on the citizens review board. Did I do that correctly?
Three from the county.
Three from the county, two from the city, right? And then one more. I would also like to mention that our city manager was instrumental in keeping this alive. There were many, many moments over the last year when this could have blown up, we could have wound up with a fractured library system, and could have lost what we have grown in the last 10, 12 years, in that the cities would no longer work together, the county would take most of the money, walk away and do what they wanted. This preserved the kind of library system we want, and our city manager was a voice of reason. I observed it many times. So, questions?
Are there any other library models that follow this that you know of in California?
They're each a little bit different, oddly enough. Everyone has their own little mix. This is very similar to some in that there are cities banded together. Usually, it's just like one or two within, like San Francisco, or in Santa, like San Mateo is a good example. No one's exactly the same.
Is there any way we can put more teeth in the library advisory commission?
I wish there were, but just by what we were trying to achieve, by not having it be parochial, and not having it be city by city, or the valley, or Scotts Valley, or Capitola, or the city of Santa Cruz, trying to keep it pure and for the benefit of the library, this was as good as we could do. And we felt that having the city managers rather than electeds for the day-to-day work...
No, I understand that, but for the library advisory commission, is there anything else that anybody has thought of so that it will be an advisory commission that will have some teeth, that people will listen to, that they will have some confidence?
It's up to us.
That the public is being represented by these individuals on that body, and that body has a strong voice before the governing board. That's the only question that the public's going to have.
That's our job, because we will get the reports from the citizens advisory committee as well, and we have to make sure that we direct our representative to the admin board to follow through and listen to those recommendations. So it is really in all of our hands. It's almost as though you have all been brought onto the library board indirectly through the city manager.
With regard to the contributions from Watsonville and Santa Cruz that were pretty much frozen, would you say that the solution that's been reached is an equitable solution?
In 20 years, yes.
Okay.
And it's going in the right direction. At the time, it was equitable, but things have changed over the years. So I think you're going to see in the next 10 years, hopefully, we will all use the same metric for the amount contributed, because that's really what should happen.
Okay, thank you.
It's not like Watsonville was getting away with murder or anything. They weren't getting hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars of extra.
It's a slight inequity.
Very little.
Okay. So in the effort to get away from parochialism, we've gone towards an administration of experts, I guess.
Benign dictatorship.
Benign dictatorship. So I'm wondering if we're going too far at the expense of not having electeds at the table, because my concern is that there's that perhaps lack of response, direct response to the public's concerns about service provided, hours, you know, a whole variety of things that the library deals with on a day-to-day basis. The electeds have that direct connection. I'm not sure that the city managers will have that direct connection. So that's my concern, actually. I see what you're saying, that we have a city manager on that board of four, okay? So I'm thinking that maybe to strengthen that connection, we should have some mechanism with our city manager for a review of policy things that come up.
Well, I believe that our ad hoc library committee should become a permanent standing committee, so that not only does the representative to the citizens advisory group sit on that committee, but so does the city manager as our staff person, so that flow of information takes place. And remember, if you look closely at this, it takes a unanimous decision to amend and approve a budget for the library. So you don't, I mean, the county can't co-opt any single city into doing something for the budget that they don't want to do. It takes all of them, all four individuals, voting unanimously to do a budget. That's a tall order, and it's something that people pay attention to. And it was put in there for a purpose.
Okay. So in terms of looking at our library committee, making it a standing committee, sort of like finance?
Yes.
Okay, I think that's a great idea. I'd like that connection. The other question that I have about is MOUs. So this is going to be on the county level, I mean, city of Santa Cruz level at this time.
The city of Santa Cruz will be negotiating with their SEIU units to approve a contract, whether it's two, three, or four years. Whatever the length of that contract, that's how long the employees of the library are guaranteed under this agreement to have the same conditions. It would be frankly foolhardy, at the end of that three-year contract, for the administrative board to decide that they're going to bring on all new employees to run the library. Let me think about that. I could see where they might move to a separate bargaining unit. And I think at the end of that time, right now, it's, that's not something that the SEIU is really warm to. They're concerned that it would dilute the bargaining power of a smaller group of employees as a bargaining unit. I feel that there are benefits to that in that the non-safety employees of Santa Cruz, the librarians are a specialty, and those that work at the library are a specialty. And I think they would have more power bargaining, and I would have a higher hope of them getting as good or better conditions than any other group within the city of Santa Cruz. Although they would not have strength in numbers, they do have strength in abilities and their expertise.
One thing I'd like to see be, this is going to come back to us for our approval.
Yes, there will be, we will have a formal approval of this. It's going through legal now, is it not? Or has it gone through legal already?
I think that the document's gone through legal. We went through these sort of preliminary reviews. We also have to see a final draft of the LFA.
Right. I knew there was a little bit more admin work to do on this before it comes to us, probably in the month of July sometime?
I think August is more realistic, yeah.
Good, August.
In a way, I share Stephanie's concerns, and before we get to the approval process or the discussion for approval, I'd like to see a proposal for our soon-to-be or library committee.
Good.
I'd like to see that so that we know what we're going to have in Capitola to protect our interests and to have that conduit guaranteed, and then I'd feel very comfortable about approving.
And I would be interested in that we more formalize the appointment of that committee. Right now, it's pretty open and relaxed, but I think it would be important in that committee to not only have the person representing us on the advisory county committee, the city manager, and also a single representative from each council member. Very balanced committee, standing at all times. And by the way, you may notice, if you read through the library JPA, the administrative board is a Brown Act committee. It is open to the public. So no one's meeting in a back room in the county building and making decisions. That's very, very significant. And if you have any other questions, Janice O'Driscoll's in the audience. She's our acting library director. We lost Teresa Landers, and after this is all secured and approved, we will then go out with the help of a consultant and actually hire a new library director. And yes, I said consultant, and yes, I actually was in favor of it. I've worked with library director consultants for the hiring, and they are no short of magical in their connections and their ability to do that. So, yeah, you need a consultant for that.
I have one other question, maybe sort of along the line that Ed is concerned about, which is cost. So I note that the Board of Supervisors is going to have a lot of say in asking for more money, et cetera, so I was wondering if you could talk a little bit more about that.
Asking for more money, you mean regarding the bond proceeds?
Yes.
The future bond proceeds? That's a fight that has yet to be fought. There's a lot of push, a lot of tension right now with certain needs and desires. I think that for this, for the success of this particular parcel tax to take place, everyone's going to have to settle on a lot less money. And I think it's going to take a lot of the pie-in-the-sky desires off the table, to where libraries are getting, you know, we may wind up with something like $5 million. And with the two that we have, or two and a half, we'll build a pretty reasonable 8,000 or 9,000 square foot library that would fit in our property. I see that's where we're headed. Perhaps designed with an eye to expand to adjacent property, maybe, maybe not, but I think that's the only way this is really going to come through. I think a $35 a parcel amount, 35 to 45, is a winning number. If it polls at 75%, which the city manager and I hope it does, then the saber rattling by certain small segments of the community threatening to overturn if they don't get more than their share will be moot. Did I get through that without mentioning any names? I think so.
I think you did.
Okay, good. I'll leave it at that.
I think we should recognize Mike's contribution to the library effort here.
Thank you.
What other point I do want to make regarding, you know, the county and the allocation, and this is sort of our last little remaining thing, and this is beyond the JPA, but the point that I made where the library fund is going to contribute a flat amount into the LFA going forward, so growth in the property tax is going to now be allocated by the Board of Supervisors for library fund libraries. And it's a $5 million figure, so, you know, you grow that figure at 3%, 4% a year, it's a pretty big number pretty quickly. And so I have been pushing the county, and they have talked to me, and we've conceptually suggested a sort of MOU to guide how those funds would be allocated, because I think that's important from Capitola's perspective because it's our tax dollars, too. It only, you know, of the overall amount, we're only 8% of the total amount in the library fund, but, you know, it is our tax dollars, and I think it is appropriate for us to have a little bit of a say with where some of those go, and probably should come back to Capitola in some way or another.
There was a lot of robust discussion during Monday night's meeting on that, and it's in our minutes that everyone was very specific about the fact that that money needs to be spent only at the 10 branches, the bookmobile, and the virtual branch period, that no other pet project should be funded by the county's extra fund.
I'm glad you're in it, Mike, not us.
There were times that I wished that anybody else was in it but me, but that's okay.
Thank you. Is there any member of the public who would like to address this? Janice, would you like to introduce yourself? We haven't met you yet, so please come forward.
This is selfless volunteerism. Janice could have, Janice could have sat back very comfortably as a highly qualified librarian and not put herself on the firing line, and there she was. Just, I always thought you were such an intelligent, level-headed. What happened?
I actually really pleased...
I'm actually really pleased that I can help in this way. I was most recently the division manager of Programs and Partnerships. I've worked my way up through my library career. I started out as a half-time children's librarian and a cataloger. I have worked in public libraries in Texas, Massachusetts, Pennsylvania, and then I came to California. I've run bookmobile services for the whole width of Massachusetts was my territory. I've done jail service in Pennsylvania Anthracite Coal Region, and then I've done a lot of different things here. So I think the only thing I would say, Mike, is that there are three bargaining units with the library. It's SEIU, and then there's two different units with OE3. But the basis that you explained is correct. Can I answer any questions, or this is who I am?
Nice to meet you, yes. Hope to see you again.
Thanks for what you do.
Thank you.
And, you know, let me put a plug in for the librarians in general in Santa Cruz County. For better or for worse, you know, we're not famous for being the highest-paid library organization in the state or in this area. And in spite of that, we retain our librarians. They truly love what they do and where they do it. Just remarkable.
Very proud of what we do. Happy to work with all of you. And particularly, and the other thing to remember is Capitola and Felton, regardless of what happens, have impromised new libraries, and that hasn't changed.
It's in the agreement.
That, whatever level we go in at, that's a given.
And for some reason, over the last 10 years, we've had three members of the library team at the Library of Congress retire here. Think about that, that roll around your head a little bit. Why does something like that happen? And one of them sits on our board right now. And, you know, there has to be something magical about this place. Some book juju takes place here or something.
Thank you. Thank you, yes.
Thank you.
You can call me anytime if I can help.
So is there a motion to stop the report?
I, oh, Mike. I also move.
Second?
Motion is second. All is in favor?
Aye.
We move to item F, Consider the Introduction to Ordinance Permitting Title 15 municipal code by adding Chapter 15.10 to provide an expedited streamlined permitting process. I love that word.
Holy macro real.
Geez. So good yours. Thanks, Richard.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. This item is before you this evening as a result of Assembly Bill 2188, which passed last year. It requires all California cities and counties to adopt a solar streamlining ordinance by September 2015. And this ordinance would apply to all small residential rooftop solar systems that are under 10 kilowatts for energy production. In summary, the bill requires that rooftop solar permits are issued through an administrative process, like a building permit, not a discretionary permit that would go to a planning commissioner of city council, that the permit process be expedited to reduce the amount of time, reduce costs, you standardize and streamline applications and checklists, and that there be no more than one building inspection performed on an installation. And then finally, that a city or county could not condition approval of a solar installation based on a homeowner association approval. The good news is the City of Capitola largely complies with this bill as we stand today. This chart here kind of shows the requirements of the Assembly Bill, the current standards that the city uses, and then the change that would come from it. By and large, we really aren't looking at any changes. We would expedite our permit process. Right now, it's about one to three weeks, depending on workload. We're going to aim to get everything in and out within one business week or five working days. And we have to create some streamlined standardized application checklist. We're in the process of doing that. The state did develop some handy-dandy templates for us to use. We're changing those a little bit based on our needs, but all in all, this isn't a big change for Capitola. And so with that, our recommendation is to adopt the ordinance. Thank you. Available for questions.
Questions are raised. Mike?
I am very much in favor of increasing the threshold for two reasons. There are rooftops large enough and photovoltaic panels efficient enough to believe that a 16 KW system is not out of the question and will be the norm. And secondly, they come in modules of 4 KW, so 10 is kind of a bastard size. And I think there's nothing wrong with streamlining up to 16 KW. It's my only recommendation.
Yeah, okay. Stephanie?
Why no inspection? And they're inspecting to see that it's placed properly and that it's operable. So if there's no inspection, I can see how that happened, probably because they just wanted to make it quick and easy. But is it a safety hazard issue for the homeowner, or are they going to be missing anything because they don't have an inspection?
So it's standard to do an inspection on these types of systems. There's a lot of electricity that goes through, and you want to make sure that it's safe for the inhabitants of the structure. Some agencies would have several inspections. They might go out and check when you wire, and then when you mount it on the roof, and then a final. Our practice has been to do one unless you fail. If you do something correctly, that would trigger a need to do another inspection.
But that says?
One inspection.
Oh, that says one inspection. Okay. So no, great. So just a final.
Right. As long as everything's done correctly and built safely.
Are we the only city that's free?
No, actually, I looked at that. There are a few others out there, but...
In the county.
In the county, you know, I really can't say with any certainty, but I can say there's not many other agencies in California that offer for free.
Good for us.
Yeah. We're as cheap as you can get.
Nothing's free in the county. Come on, let's be serious.
I think we are. I think I was trying to plug us there, but that's okay.
No, I'm at the county building. There's nothing free inside there.
Good for us. Thank you.
We haven't got to the step yet where we're requiring solar panels on new construction, but we could easily require for houses to be pre-wired for it. In other words, running it to an area on a south exposure, let's say, for it. So when you go to do the hookup, you don't have to tear the house apart to do it. So we could make that part of our building code, that houses, new construction required to do inline wiring for new panels, not requiring the panels themselves.
Maybe the next time we update our green ordinance? Because I'd also like to add, the real no-brainer in solar gain, and that is solar-assist hot water, should be required on all new homes, period. Not that expensive, and it is the most bang for the buck.
Yeah.
Good, Mike.
Yeah, we do look to update our green building ordinance by the end of the year, and we'll be bringing that for you. We did also intend on bringing a pre-wiring solar-ready type ordinance before then, maybe in the next month or two, that would essentially require pre-wiring for solar, electric vehicle charging stations, solar hot water heaters, new construction. So that's something that you can expect to see probably sometime this summer.
Any members of the public who'd like to address this on this issue? If you can, we'll turn to council for deliberation.
I will move the staff recommendation with the increase of the threshold being 16 KW for photovoltaic.
I'll second that. Okay. Motion is second. All is in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We will adjourn to the next regular meeting as capital of city council, and we are going to re-adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, before you do that, I do think that you wanted to report out on closed session.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think we skipped over that earlier step, so...
We, at closed session today, we had an evaluation of the city manager's performance, and we support our city manager, and we gave him some food of thought and some inspiration, I think. And we're happy with his performance, and we hope he continues on for many years with us. Thank you.
You're here.
Okay. We will adjourn to the next regular meeting of Capitola City Council on Thursday, June 25th, and we're going to re-adjourn now as the redevelopment agency. Do we have any items? Oh, we need a roll call, I'm sorry. Sue?
Actually, a roll call's not necessary.
Oh, it's not? Okay. General Government Hearing. Jamie, you have anything to put in here?
I think the first item will be to see if any member of the public had any comments, any not on the agenda.
What are they going to comment on?
Formal redevelopment.
Oh. Would any member of the public like to address this on the redevelopment agency that doesn't exist?
The nonexistent agency?
Seen, seen.
Seen none.
That's a good name. That's a good name for it. It's shorter.
Jamie, take over.
Okay. Well, that takes us to the General Government Public Hearings, and this is really just the resolution to approve the proposed fiscal 15, 16 fiscal budget for the redevelopment agency and successor agency.
The ROPS?
Yes. The items on the ROPS.
Okay. So do we need a motion or do we?
Yeah. The staff recommendation is to adopt the resolution, which would approve the budget for this fiscal year, and that's consistent with the draft budget that was circulated in the budget hearings that we held.
Is there a motion to adopt the budget?
Move approval of the resolution?
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Harlan?
Aye.
Councilmember Botter?
Aye.
Councilmember Betrand?
Here.
Councilmember Termini?
Aye.
Mayor Norton?
Here. Okay. We will adjourn from the redevelopment agency. Stephanie?
I just had a question. Are we meeting the second meeting in August?
I thought we're usually dark, aren't we?
We usually are, and I can't remember what we decided. Did we decide something this year?
I don't think there is one.
So the adopted schedule, it does have us dark in the second weekend of August. We talked about during the workshop potentially looking at a future date next year. I think staff may be suggesting moving that date up a little bit to go dark maybe in late July next year, but this year...
No meeting.
No meeting, second weekend of August.